It's okay.
Sorry.
I will now take comments from the communities. Keith, do you have comments for us at all tonight?
Uh, nope, just here to listen for now.
Okay. Thank you. Look at the correspondence. We received our renewal values for the property account capacity from our insurance, which has become effective January 1st, but need to be submitted shortly. I will pass it around to the other two a little data. Um, any comments? I guess you could direct to Michelle or Linda. We received notice from the LTC, our Do I Trust Unemployment saying that they have an average of 7.2 overall reduction in rates for members for 2026, which is good news. They will be returning some money to the members in form of contribution credits on our insurance bill, but they'll be based on claim experiences and payroll exposure, so they're not giving us a amount at this time, but that's good news that the rate's going down. Looks like there's a conference, reimagining rural capacity summit, hands-on day of research, ideas in action to strengthen small town, planning of development, November 13th in Randolph. We, Michelle and I have signed up, but if anybody else is interested, being going. Turn around. Received the annual report for the Northeast Kingdom Broadband and the annual report for Royal Fiber Net. We received upcoming VMTC workshops, webinars after, for the month of November. Okay, we're a little early, so we Our library trustee isn't here yet. Seth isn't here. Linda's not here.
Here.
They're all paper scissors.
Would you like to do your reports now?
Sure. Do I have any real changes? That's your reason, I've just got it over. And now that we're getting here. And if somebody comes on first, I think. I still have some money. We talked last year about maybe getting an assistant because I'm just getting swamped every day with people coming in. I cannot do my listers job anymore. And next year we started with the appraisal, and I really need to be able to handle that. Something you need to
What are your suggestions?
Well, my first thought was the assistant to Joe, just to deal with people coming in and the day-to-day stuff and he would do with the real issues. I'm thinking something like that.
Does this budget reflect that? Are you saying you have money for that?
It's some of the budgets, yeah.
Do we have a coffee?
No.
We have listeners.
It's on the back, sorry.
Oh, sorry. Well, we're the last chair. Oh, so there's nobody in there. Or an assistant, or I don't have that number. I can get it if you need it.
Yes.
So this budget is the way the office stands today, not with more help.
No, never included more help.
Is $12,000, you'd be able to hire somebody to help you out?
Right.
We use an $11,000.
Salary is 11, yeah, but the total is 12,125, yeah. Oh, and just to make sure that I'm understanding, you're saying that it would be enough because you would have less time. It's the same hours to run the office, it just wouldn't be split. I see.
But this person would expect to be there Wednesdays from
Well, it's kind of negotiable. Need to be everybody.
Well, think about it. You just said that people are bugging you every day about, and you can't do your other work, so that's not going to change.
Yeah, I think as development happens around here and zoning becomes as complex as it's becoming.
Right.
It's, we have gotten off very lucky because you have been willing to do the work for this figure, but I think that we as a town need to start figuring out what we're going to do when we need to fill your shoes.
Six hours a week. I don't know.
And that's
I have one job.
Then that's what I mean. This number reflects six hours a week, and it seems like the office needs more than that.
I should work a lot of Fridays.
Work at home sometimes.
Just to catch up.
I think I call that as a community member. Sort of just from observing some of the years. It seems like making a drastic change in one year is always less palatable than making incremental changes over years.
Right.
So it's like, what Michael's saying, maybe making an incremental change now might be a good idea. Probably where you were going with that now.
That was kind of where I was in it. I mean, I don't think, Tom, you're not going to retire this week, I hope, so we've got some time to plan to fill your shoes, but that means that you need to take on an assistant, you need to train an assistant, and that assistant needs to be ready to take on the role. And if you're already swamped at six hours a week, it would be my opinion that we should think about planning for giving that office more money. Whether or not we'll be able to, I'm not sure. Ask should be higher, I think.
Yeah, I don't think this budget would
Yeah, how are you going to get qualified, somebody qualified, and you hand that person, you know, while you're doing the training? I mean, if you're willing to volunteer, I'm willing to accept it, but nobody should work for free.
I've been volunteering for years.
I mean, just the rough figure, you don't almost have to double that salary. And that's only putting in 12 hours for the assistant. For the week, you know, say like a monkey Wednesday. Yeah. I don't know if that would be any help or not.
Anything would be a help. That's your next year, doing the big appraisal. But I've got to be all in. Definitely somewhere we can think about though. Yeah, I don't have the answers right now.
I'm just thinking as far as, I'm sure Michelle's taking notes on our budget presentations, I might put a question mark with an up arrow next to that. In hopes that we could ask for more money, because I'm hoping that our wastewater system will encourage development in downtown, I mean, you're going to be buried at Perkins.
They're waiting in the wastewater.
Table, so Tom, you'll present another, you'll think about it, present a budget here?
Well, I think we need a little more discussion.
Finding the right person to just come for six hours, 12 hours a week, that's a challenge, so
Yeah.
But it's not, I mean, it could be doable, you never know. It doesn't have to be a Wocat, zoning administrator does not have to be a Wocat resident, to my understanding. So you might have some retired person from the state that worked in something like this that wanted to get out of the house a couple days a week.
That might be an idea.
Yeah.
Or Linda, maybe like some of the other positions, a zoning administrator that works part-time in another town as well. Doing the same kind of work in different places.
Can this job also tag onto the list as well?
That's what he's complaining about.
He's not wanting to work.
He doesn't, no, you can't get your work done because people are always interrupting. No, he needs to segregate it, and even, well, Linda was a lister for a while when she was my assistant on other days. It doesn't work. You're always back and forth, you're not, you know, and you're supposed to be doing your main job, you're doing that job. To me, it was frustrating. And I think it built up a little
Hard to draw boundaries.
Yeah.
Where all that.
Right. I know in some towns, like Moorestown, their zoning administrator is also the help officer, but that's a position which is an occasional. You can kind of separate that a little differently. All right, we'll move on. We'll talk about it on some more.
All right, there's one other thing. It says, uh, zoning, planning, I don't know what the planning commission is working on, if they have any funding required.
No, you've got some grant money for partial zoning rewrite to accommodate some new stuff, but I don't think we have anything above that.
But there's not a matching. Once in a great while, there'd be a match. I think once that I remember they asked for some money for a matching grant, but other than that, I've never, you know, been asking for it.
So I recall there being, the one that I'm aware of, I don't recall there being anything.
This was years ago. Okay, that is. Okay. Thank you. All right, we'll move back to our agenda. The Library Board of Trustees appointment of Nikki LaRiche.
I'm Charmaine Lloyd. I'm the chair of the trustees for Wocat Library, and the trustees have all agreed to have Nikki LaRiche as our trustee. We've put out, and had one on the library board here on the outside board. We didn't hear anybody that wanted to volunteer, so.
So you're recommending Nikki?
I'm recommending Nikki.
Anyone have any questions on Nikki? I know that she's been helping out at the library quite a bit for a number of years, so she's familiar with it. Now, take a motion to appoint Nikki as the Library Trustee to fill the position of
Don Cochrane.
Don Cochrane.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Any further discussion? Who's in favor? I'm opposed, so period. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
It's Don, the A W U N S.
Let's see when her term expires, because it's important to keep March. Right, so she's, she's filling the term of Don until March of '26, and then she'll have to run on the ballot.
Does that work the same as our, you're going to do the signatures and everything else? And those are going to be in 10 weeks before?
That's the rule sometime in February.
Yeah, I didn't even say end of January.
No, I think it's the end of January.
Yeah.
It's early. It's on the website anyway, and the form is on the website. Okay, thank you.
Good evening.
Seth, you're here to talk to us about future land use maps.
Yep, so in South, um, this year, a fucking month ago, to talk to you all about the future land use map for the regional plan related to the states act 181. If folks who weren't here that time, um, this is the bill that was passed by the, let's say, here, a piece of that was standardizing the future land use areas and color schemes that are used for the future land use maps in the regional plan. So while regions have to use the same names, same color scheme, there is some discretion in fitting those areas into the context of each region, each municipality to reflect the goals of the community. Just a few quick things, this does not in any way supplant your local zoning bylaws. It does not supplant your local municipal plan. It's a, it's a planning tool only to paint a picture of future land use in the region and using common areas, giving a better statewide picture as well. So the last time we met, we looked over a draft of our attempts to translate your municipal plan into into these land use areas, as well as incorporate some feedback from the select board. So then hit on three broad things. First are the purplish-magenta areas. Those are the village center areas. In Wocat, there's areas around the main village on Route 15 and School Street and North Wocat. The town currently has state village center designations for both of those areas. Benefit of that program is tax credits to private property owners for tax credits related to code improvement, sod improvement, and historic preservation. There's also grant eligibility and grant competitiveness for the municipality and community organizations in each, in the designated area. A change in 181 is that those designations and their boundaries no longer need to be approved by the state downtown board. They can now be expanded with some guardrails based on the community and regional planning commission. So the discussion we had last time related to the Wocat Village on Route 15 was extending the area to include the cluster homes at the bottom of School Hill on Flatiron Road, as well as extending to include some of the homes of the Gateway area on Route 15. That, that's been done. And then in North Wocat, there was another cluster of homes on both the north and south side. The current designation was extended to include those as well. One of the other benefits of the changes to statute is there may be more discretion to communities regarding speed limits within the designated areas. That's being codified through some drafting issues of referencing the new areas versus the old designations, but that's something to keep in mind. The other second piece I want to bring to your attention, the enterprise areas, those are the grayish, purplish areas. Those are essentially gravel pits and industrial parks and airports. So in Wocat, those are primarily your large gravel pits, as well as the Fisher Bridge Enterprise Park. Those are, those are depicted here. And then the rural general, which is the mustard yellow and the rural forestry, the teal, which covers most of the town. Those are descriptive, rather than distinctive differences in the regional plan below County. We're referring to policies related to both of those areas, really, in the same section. Those are areas that are generally rural, and the regional plan policies spell out that rural subdivision, rural enterprise, small businesses are all still expected to exist and continue in accordance with local regulations in those areas. The dark green is what is referred to as rural conservation, and in the regional plan that, the only areas that would be specifically under that are state or federal-owned and managed lands. So there will be land in current use that are conservation in the teal, rural, ag and forestry, and the rationale for that is simply that many of those easements still provide for variety of land uses within some areas. So the next steps for this, and why we're trying to meet with all of this collect boards is another change in the statute is that the future land use maps, which used to be adopted as part of the regional plan by LCPC's Board of Directors, which is made up of appointees of each select board and board of trustees, as well as county directors, would approve the land use map and then go to effect. Act 181 created an additional step, which is the state land use board would review all of the maps and plans and make sure they're consistent with statute. If we have until the end of 2026 for that approval to be granted, if it's not done by then, all of the designations in the region are on pause until it is, and that would not be great for Wocat and other communities where those designations have helped bring in resources from the past. To meet that schedule in the land use forest adoption process, we need to submit the draft basically by early 2026 so they can begin. So we want to, your feedback on whether we've captured all your comments, whether we've reached anything, missed anything important, so that we can incorporate them and then move forward with the preparing the draft, finalizing the draft for review by our board directors in any of those timelines. So I've just talked more than I intended to, which happens a lot when I come here. But do you have any questions or comments? Though there's a lot to this.
So conservation land is only state and federal, which means our forest doesn't get dark green?
Correct. If we have, if the community explicitly wants its municipal forest land to be dark green, we have done that, but we haven't taken it on ourselves to call it conservation land because, you know, the, yeah.
And treating things in the green, the light green versus the yellow, you're treating things essentially the same. How is the distinction made? Is it a density calculation? How does?
It, it's essentially, the distinction is really where there are concentrations of parcels that are smaller than the threshold for current use. And, you know, in order to avoid having a map that's just a weird, like speckled, we, we focused on, you know, more than, more than a handful, yep.
The only thing, on that note, the only thing I see is this how to describe it other than this little clump of them on Jones Lane, where it seems like there are approximately 22,000 little plenty odd-shaped lots. That may also if, if this trunk on, on Sand Hill meets, then this trunk here on Jones Lane may also meet.
Okay, that's exactly the kind of feedback that's really helpful. Can you find it?
Totally, so, yeah, that's it. It looks, I mean, again, I'm not going to do the math.
Yeah.
That little trunk there looks to be as, almost as dangerous as that. And then there was this, that little, those chunks, you might have heard of, so this chunk here?
Yeah.
It just appears to be, again, I'm not sure what the criteria, I'll ask out to look at that, and if it would be consistent, which is what we're going for, so.
Yep. Yeah, that chunk there, and then the other one was.
Is that airport? That really does stand an airport? It's just a grass field, Mr. Taylor a bit years ago.
Yeah, and I don't think, where is that?
Not off the air, it's just not up there.
Okay.
You mentioned in your
Oh, um, it's, it's, um, that small private airport isn't here, but the state airport in, in Moorestown. Sorry for that confusion. Thank you. Yeah. Help me clarify that.
Now, you have recreational areas. Is Wocat Pond considered a recreational area or?
So the resource-based recreation areas, those are really the the way the statute is written related to those is really the, the, the sort of commercial recreation, so the ski resorts and those, those things. So I think if, if there was something similar to, you know, Craft Street Outdoor Center, which is a, you know, commercial enterprise, but I believe there's mostly camps. you know, commercial enterprise, but I believe there's mostly camps. I'm wrong about that, we can check it out.
Didn't stay, maybe that's considered coming out of there?
Yeah, I think there is. So there's gonna be land in the teal rural hagen forestry that is subject to um conservation easements. Um there have been some comments from people about ensuring the distinction between state land and private handheld land because sometimes those conservation easements have carve-outs for like the farmsteads and other activities. But that's a good, we are gonna be including a separate map that shows con- conservation easements and town-owned land, so that people get the full picture of what the conservation in the region looks like though.
And how important are the distinctions between what is public road and legal trail on a map like this? Is it a viable thing or?
I think on this map, um that's not super important.
Okay.
Um because that that fact, um this, there's another discussion going on, which I'm almost reluctant to to mention, but um separate from the future land use map or the Act two fifty tiers and the road rule. Um and the diff- distinction between like a class three road and a class four road and illegal trail may impact how the road rule and tier three are implemented, uh but that those are independent from these packs. Um but it's a good idea to monitor how that plays out in the looking process.
So just to confirm that, you said conservation easements and towns lands will be illustrated on separate maps on this?
Yeah, yeah.
Within the regional plans?
Within the regional plan, yeah. Any other questions or?
Who's flood overlay is this? There's so many of them. Is this the?
This is um currently the flood overlay includes the um current FEMA mapped uh flood plains and the river corridors. Um so as we've discussed at other meetings, the the FEMA overlay is is out of date. Um but is the best available data for this level of mapping since it needs to be consistent across the region.
To change the subject, when when are the new FEMA maps gonna be? Are they gonna be updated? I'd be worried on that.
Yeah, so there was um so the official FEMA mapping process, there was a meeting um a couple of months ago with the folks from FEMA and their consultants about the next steps for that. Um there was a pause on that uh last year because when the draft work maps came out, um they showed flood levels being reduced in Johnson specifically um compared to the nineteen eighties maps. So what that would mean is that FEMA was saying there was less flood risk in Johnson now than there was in uh the nineteen eighties. Um LCPC and Vermont Environmental Conservation um and as well as as other regions asked in the on the Lemoine Watership, asked FEMA to take a second look at the data. Um and they they they've done that. Um they've confirmed that the data they used to develop Lemoine Maps did not include the twenty twenty-three floods. Um they also have stopped counting, I think, twenty sixteen, so we they are now redoing the math um because of that. Um that was, I think, in, that was early summer, um so we haven't heard of progress. Um I suspect progress has been paused like a lot of things at the federal level. Um so that's the FEMA process. Um LCPC uh conferredly and independently of doing that, has been doing the the flood modeling um work uh that is evaluating the hydraulics of the main stem and key tributaries, and there will be um draft results of that coming out um this month. Uh those will not be a regulatory layer, but they will give you tools to understand flood risks better in the village. Um all FEMA's maps are the official regulatory map for flood hazard regulations and insurance and all of those things, um but as a reference tool and planning tool, um we'll have that that data from our flood modeling available too.
I'm sorry, I missed a key portion of 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 something. Um so the the flood overlay, does that represent, and this is maybe too simplistic, but does that represent like the flooding every ten year? Is it?
It great question. It is the hundred-year flood plain as depicted on the FEMA maps currently in effect.
Thank you.
Nineteen eighty-two?
Nineteen eighty-two. Yeah.
Do you have to take a vote or anything?
Um you don't need to officially put up a limit. Um but there are major concerns for many members of the select board. This this would be the best time to to know him.
Augustus Michaels.
All right.
I'd like to for coming out on this awful line.
It's, enjoy the rain.
All right.
No, I mean.
I hope and get back to Jonathan for the stuff. But do you need anything else tonight or?
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
We didn't ask for.
Belinda. We're gonna pick up the uh um collection of delinquent tax policy changes. They're on mute.
Say that again, Linda.
We're gonna take up the collection of delinquent tax policy.
Yes. Yep. So uh you have, hold on. So you have the policy in front of you. This is the final policy that I've um come up with. Basically, um we're going from like when we had one page to like five pages. And basically it includes um all the new, eh uh there were three different um bills that were introduced and um they uh came up with, you have to wait a year. You have to offer them a payment plan before you do any action on them. And you can't do and basically put them up for tax sale unless they have fifteen hundred dollar minimum. So we've um, these are all addressed in this policy. And so um I even went to a webinar today that talked about what the towns need to do going forward, and there were a hundred and thirty towns at this webinar uh learning how to do it because most of us have, uh this is all new to us. So the first thing is the policy, and then we can move forward with what we have to do. Our town is a little unique because we don't have an outside delinquent uh tax collector. We do it all in-house. So the town is basically the delinquent tax collector and I act as his agent for the select board. So basically, this addresses and makes it fair for everybody going forward to know what to expect. Um and there's no like side deals or anything like that. It's very clear to them what they can and what the town can do and what the taxpayer, the situation, and um it says to lay out why you are, you know, have this policy, and it's basically to protect the taxpayer, the other taxpayers too, so it's not a burden to them. And it's not a burden to the town because it's kind of like a lien. So the policy addresses that.
So I've read through it a couple of times and sent my comments to Belinda, which is updated. I I'm happy with it. Hope anyone else heard any comments.
The second paragraph. Uh responsibility taxpayer town office, by written agreement with the town, a period of six months may be allowed. Could be up to twelve months.
So if they have multiple years, it would be twelve months. If they have one year, um they're given six months to try to catch up.
And without poring through the rest of this, is that outlined somewhere what the distinction is and how many years is several years?
Yes, and so in other words, now uh we cannot put them up for tax sale until they've missed a whole year from the date of let's say uh they missed May two thousand and twenty-five. I can't put them up for tax sale until our or even I cannot even contemplate um sending them to tax sale until I've offered them a payment plan and they have not responded in any way for a certain number of days. And then after that, we could send them to the attorney and then the attorney has to do all their uh time and it's usually like forty-five to ninety days before they could even have a tax sale and set it up. So the taxpayer is given an amount of time to um uh get their act together, to put it mildly. Um but we would then, first, when they become delinquent, we send a letter of understanding of uh, you know, agreement that they can pay over time and we'll give them up to six months. But say we're starting now and we haven't, they're they owe from two thousand and twenty-four. And two thousand and twenty-six, may, they haven't paid the last two years, then we would give them up to twelve months.
So the further behind you are, the more time we get to come clean.
Right, but also they also have to stay current, and if they miss any payments, then we can automatically uh know that they've uh decided to not follow through with the agreement and we could send them to tax sale at that time.
Keith, did you have a question?
No, I think it's just enough. Oh, it's just like, no, sorry.
I will say we only have about eighteen thousand right now from not not this last year because I can't couldn't do that anyhow, twenty-four, twenty-five, but from twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-three, twenty-four, we only have about eighteen thousand. And some of them are under fifteen hundred, so I couldn't send them anyhow. So as soon as you approve this policy, I'm going to send them letters of um to try to get them to be do an agreement so they will start paying on them and give them like six months, and if they need longer, we can do longer since it is two years and hopefully catch up on that without having a tax sale.
Now who gives them um the agreement or signs the agreement? Is it between you and the taxpayer and select board and the taxpayer?
As the agent, it would be between uh myself and them, uh but I would um, all agreements would have to be um seen by the select board um also. In other words, you guys are kept in the loop.
Very interesting.
And I wouldn't send anybody to tax sale unless the select board gave me permission to do.
Is that written in here somewhere? I just want, I just want to be clear. I mean, if if we're talking about not having unwritten understandings of that, buddy, I want to make sure that that part is.
It is, it is in here. It says that um if they if you sign this, you're agreeing to um let this policy stand for itself as part of what the town would do for each taxpayer and what the delinquent tax uh agent eh can do on behalf of the town. But you also would be involved in every aspect of it. And the tax sale, they recommend that the treasurer and the delinquent tax collector do not represent the town that one of the select board members is there. So if we ever had a sl- uh tax sale in the future, one of the select board would have to be there representing the town. And of course, we would have our attorney there. Anything under fifteen hundred, they also allow us to take them to court, to small claims court if the town so wished, and that would be also have to go to the select board to be told to go forward with that because there would be fees involved that we would try to collect from the tax um payer. But we would also have to initiate, you know, the payment before to go to court even. Because the town is the one that would engage the attorney for the tax sale. It would not be the tax collector, as you can see. I think it's on the next to last page at the top.
It's somewhere it said that twelve months. I didn't see anything for six months. I'm a little confused about that.
However, taxpayer fails to contact the town or does not get current within six months or does not deal in good faith, it is the duty of the town to proceed with all appropriate collection methods to recover the debt in a timely manner. That is on page two. I think it's the second page down.
We're looking for more time to review it.
No, I think it's I mean, Belinda, you're the one that's got to deal with it. If you're happy with the way that it is and nobody else can find any egregious errors.
I I am happy. I've looked at um five other towns and after today's uh webinar. Um I I do believe it is in the best interest of the town to have this in effect as soon as possible. Um so we can, I I I talked to one um taxpayer the other day and he asked me to send the agreement and I told him that I would send it as soon as I had the um policy in hand so he could, we could make an agreement and go forward with that. And he owes about four grand, so I think it it is in the best interest of the town to to try to put an end to the the two-year delinquency we have.
Any comments occur for Belinda? No, if we have no more comments or discussion, then we'll take a motion to um. Adopt the policy for collection of delinquent taxes dated November fifth, two thousand twenty-five.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none then. All those in favor adopting this policy, say aye.
Aye.
Post. So carry on.
Thank you, guys. My dogs and I will say good night.
Okay, Gordon is not able to join us tonight with a budget, so we'll move on to the select board. Administrative assistant report.
A long one, so.
Um Raymond, do you know what I got? We're sitting here, alright, sorry.
So it's just kind of a similar thing. When we contracted for the reappraisal. They said twenty-seven, but I was told by Ed who runs the whole thing, now we're probably gonna do it in twenty-six. So we added money last year to get it started, never got started. So we've kind of rolled that funding over into this year where it will be started. That's the name there. The other one was you see of plus three percent, Sam put that in there. I told him. We don't automatically get that. It's just that you're discretion. So that number included the three percent.
So like I explained, so the only increase is the three percent, no?
And the mileage.
Mileage. You do have to put them in the paper, a lot of them. Um they'd be driving around. Like I explained earlier, um. No, if if you don't, if you haven't spent your money. And it will not roll over. You lose it unless you come to the board in June and ask for some of it to be uh reserved. You can always use money to fill forwards. Things come up. We're not just dating. Okay, thank you.
Hey, so I think everyone has noticed that the houseless person left the site um on the October twenty-second. Um I had continued to monitor and photo document the trash it's trash situation and we still have that as a record. Um I informed the person almost daily since October ninth, um once issuing that violation. Letter that they had two weeks to leave, they had until the twenty-third to leave. And otherwise, we would be contacting the local public share on the twenty-third, have their car towed. Um. Uh Ryan Murphy jumped this person's battery and they on the twenty-second and they left the site at six P M. They went into Morrisville and they were gonna wait overnight to seek help from Capstone. Uh from what I understand, the person is still in Morrisville. I don't know if they're waiting. Um appointment for uh like housing from Capstone, but. They're they're gone. Um I started cleaning up the site. I filled a bag and I'll just keep going out and clean up the site as I can. Um we talked about other ways of filling the dump trucks, but we we just don't have a truck at the moment. We don't have our ones on back, so. I'm just going out with gloves and cleaning it up. So there's that situation. Um we received the grant and aid that for the work we did this summer for twelve thousand dollars. It's for the East Hill. Road um M R G P work. Um so we have the check in for that. We received the passive grant check for the emergency road signage. It was in the amount of twenty-three, the two thousand three hundred fifty-two dollars and forty-three cents. Um and that was fifty percent of the cost to purchase twelve tripod stands and nineteen roll upsides. That include the fire department requested six high water signs for flooding. So we received the twenty-three hundred basically, which was half. Um and so our signed budget is still, we still have a little bit of that. Um the FEMA twenty twenty-four flood, we have received payments for the work to be completed. For six culvert replacements on Marsh Road, East Hill and Town Hill. Um and then to complete some work on Flatiron Road and dealer pond road, it was a hundred eighty-five thousand seven hundred twenty-four dollars. I'm a little. When we were looking at it, they're asking for. Uh prefab headwalls. That are skewed and they're just, they've really blown up what we asked for and they've gone above and beyond. What even the hydro studies are calling for. And so. I'm working with Lucian tomorrow. Um to see if this is necessary or if we should, we can write an amendment of letter, a letter that says we'd like an amendment to those grants. And because they're not, we have six culverts, keep in mind. And if we get seventy-five percent, maybe eighty-five percent of it, that's a lot of money up the town still to install. You know, for an extra fifteen or twenty thousand dollars per culvert. That we've absorbed it. So I'm a little concerned about that. I'll let you know later. I just want you to know that. That money that we received, some of it may go back if we if we tend to amend the the. The um grant agreement because. There's only one culvert that really we thought would benefit, Dylan and I thought would benefit from a a prefab. At wall, the rest we can create with large stones. I mean, that's what what are there now and fine. Um it just is whether FEMA will allow that, I think that's a state. It's just weird that they put all of these small culverts, you know, eighteen to twenty-four inch culverts with two to four foot head walls on all of them.
Over and above the engineering reports.
Yeah.
Wild.
Yeah, so I'm I'm just perplexed by that. They don't seem to know. I met with um Grace and our. Our FEMA person and our state person yesterday and they don't know why that happened either. They think it might be a mistake. I don't know. So Joseph is kind of looking into it with the hazard mitigation as well. Um a while back, Ryan Murphy asked about the unauthorized vehicle use on the rail trail. Um I discussed the issue. I met with Jackie Castillo and William Gray or Bill Gray. Uh a couple of week, about a week ago, and I discussed the issue in conjunction with some other things that we talked about. Um they're gonna think about signage and possible barriers. That they can put up and I told them that from. My perspective, I've seen vehicles entering from dead end road, dead end road as well as somewhere pond road. Um I think that's often due to the faulty GPS directions. But anyway, they're kind of thinking about it. There's not a lot that we can do. I'm getting the 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 police, the sheriff department. There's nobody really policing it, but I do know that it's a problem. So they're gonna try to address the problem with signage barriers.
Do they want to do the posts in the middle of it that they have in Harvard? When they put in, they put a post that they can remove.
Oh, well, maybe they might consider that.
Whether they get rail or something, they know this piece of wood that goes on with box.
There are a lot of um standards that they are revisiting now, um such as the the for siding paired. You know, those little dust that they have.
Trunkated domes.
Yeah, they they kind of just walk you off the cliff and it's like, I don't know if it makes any sense of. School students being, they give this perfect example. Doesn't make sense to me. We'll ask about it, but I don't. Um they're revisiting standards. I'm fitting in fiber, so we've had fun with that. Um we are getting free public services at the town hall. They were there today to be. And so I spent some time, Dylan, thank you, Dylan. He spent a good chunk of his day there. Um and then they ended up that they could not install it because they wanted to pull cord from the frosty road. Drivers, they did the same thing, I think, to the church, remember said. Um. The contract has been signed. We're just kind of waiting for them to set up another install date for the town hall. Uh the town office contract has been signed. I've also asked for contracts for the library and um the garage, only because I found out that. All it sounds like they were turning all phone lines, copper lines into voiceover I P. You don't really have a choice. They're just like, and I found out because we got a call at the library saying this is what's gonna be happening. Um so. I'm setting both of those up for contracts as well. I don't know. I have not heard when that install is gonna be happening. Um. Oh, and then there's been a a suggestion by a couple of people that we finally then, once we have. Better Wi-Fi, that we get some cameras, some ring cameras or some security camera setup. At our office facilities, including the garage. The garage was like, um some detectors installed. And as well as a camera, I think would be a good idea at the library and town hall or here. At this parking lot that shows protection with library.
I'm wondering, it's like, if they're not smoke detectors, how'd that get past the L C T?
We don't know. We really don't.
This building. Do you have a bunch?
It's it's every year. We do have fire, it's you know, fire extinguishers, but Jim is just real concerned that. You know, by the time they would get it, there are smoke detectors, but you can get it um. You get an alert on your phone immediately, like as soon as it's detected. And that he thinks that that would, I think he's gonna look at it for the the um fire department portion, but he would also like it on the. The town department brush.
The. He would know better than I do. The only worry I have is that. Starting the trucks, you're gonna boost the C, not the C O in the area, all the the dust and smoke and welding and everything else. It's just, it's difficult to put. So in a standard one, you you can't have infrared, you can only have photobehind, photo, I don't know, you can.
They can't have ionic.
Is that what it is?
It has to be photolighter.
Yes, thank you for the words that I can't, T V I. And um. It's difficult to make those work in environments like. You know, working garages.
They talked about dust protectors, um but we did talk about it. Um I think they're gonna try to figure it out, but anyway, they would like, he would like. Um the the fire detectors that that um. Ring to the notify them on the phone.
So much do they cost?
I don't know, yeah, sorry to jump into it.
Say, you see it in the highway budget.
Yeah, I'd like to see how much they cost.
Definitely.
But depending on the cost, it'd be something like. Could it be worth going to all the town buildings that there are to have Wi-Fi and put them in?
Yeah, well, and could we seek a grant for any of that? I wonder if something exists. Anyway, good for us.
Um so our print maintenance contractor is unable to perform services at this time. Has been injured, so he has requested that we find somebody else. And so. Um Michael, thank you, Michael, went over and um did town hall with the call, the call, he put in a support there. But um. I think this, Ed Michael has offered to do the work until we find someone else, but. I don't know how to proceed. Before, we did not go out to R F P because we had someone in mind. I don't know if we need to put this out as a a request for services and get. It's it's because our services are so varied, it's hard for someone to bid unless they just bid on time.
Well, what are you looking for?
I'm looking for someone to do all of our maintenance so that on contract, so they they would have to do like, do, you know.
On call maintenance?
Yes, just much as like we had with um job.
I I think it's only fair to advertise it, you know, you never know what's out there.
And just ask for an hourly rate basically. And if it if it varies for plumbing versus electrical versus.
Well, they can't do any electrical or plumbing.
Well, they can do.
Light bulb. Pretty much, is it?
It's just, it's just maintenance, but they have to be a contract, I think a general contractor to do, you know, siding or whatever we need that to fix.
But probably, well, you should clarify the language because it would be my recommendation that the town acts as the general contractor. When you're, when you do put this out to R F P. Um you should clarify the language because the town should act as the G C. We don't need to pay somebody to call an electrician. There's five of us at this table and and there's you. You know, we can pool resources and do the the G C work in-house, I think. I think you're mostly looking for. Somebody to perform the tasks.
And that's what, so when I hear that a a maintenance person does basically replace the light bulbs. Um I mean, we can do that on our our own, so it's just the terminology. I think it's a general contractor, correct?
No, that's.
It's just a contractor.
Yeah, I didn't need a contractor.
Not necessarily.
Handyman.
Yeah.
Handy person. And what do we call?
Our handy person, sorry.
What what do we call them? Handy person?
Yeah.
I mean, they call it maintenance, but maintenance really just implies they're emptying trash and changing like also.
Well, I think we got into a mess with that with our last person because they thought it was water supplies and washing. Things.
Yeah, well, no.
Maintenance.
So I want to avoid maintenance, so that's why I was like.
Jack of all trades, something like that, is looking for.
On-call repair services even. I mean, that's mostly what it is. It's.
We're building maintenance.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
We don't need anyone, you know, highly technical. If we need a a a good repair job, we'll put it out like we are for the. Homes.
Alright, so I'm gonna put that then out for just a general R F P on that soon. Get that replaced. And that brings us to the E nine one one signs. Um I would like to see, I don't know if I need to do that separately. Or include that in. But it's getting late in the year.
How many more do we have?
A lot. We have still um. Yeah, uh we still have six thousand in the budget that has not been used.
But how many signs are there?
I don't have a total account yet.
Was he guess twenty-five dollars a sign?
I think it's thirteen.
How much?
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
But we, they keep increasing because.
Of course, they're going to.
But we don't have money coming in. That's another thing that we visit. We have money coming in to pay for the signs, thirty-five dollars just pays for the sign and the post. And the hardware, it doesn't pay for installation and I think we need to visit that again. Because we just keep, we have to pay someone to go out now. I think we should include at least fifteen dollars a sign for installation. So it would be a fifty dollar sign fee. For E nine one. Seems reasonable or helpful.
Are you talking about um? For existing homes, are you saying for people who come in from building permits?
A building permit. We increased the fee from twenty-five to thirty-five to cover the cost of the signs, but um. It's not covering the cost of this.
Yeah.
We don't have anyone on staff to go and stuff. I don't know who was installing before, but it doesn't seem like it was getting done.
I realize it's too many men. Some of them, but not many.
Um, the two seven seven flat iron row junk ordinance violation. Uh, Mike Green spoke with the tenant. There are eight vehicles. On the site per Mike, and I've counted them. Um, there's also an RV there. I don't know what that's about. Three of the vehicles are registered and insured and still driven, so we're being told. Um, two of the vehicles will be moved off the site before December. Before the end of this December, and then per the tenant, the remaining unregistered vehicle still belong to the estate and are in probate right now. So they can't be moved until probate is resolved. Uh, I did mail yesterday a follow-up letter detailing the uh, the plan that Mike and. This tenant agreed upon, and then Mike will follow up. The first week of January to make sure those two vehicles were moved and to find out the status of the probate.
Before I forget, please put on the agenda for next week that um. Will bring up this E nine one one be.
Okay, sure. Um, I would like to uh, set up employee road crew and myself, employee reviews for their road crew and myself. And these would just be us government and executive sessions over the next four meetings. And really to discuss professional goals for the upcoming year and career career plans or training. Um, and just a good chance to check in everybody, see what they're doing. So if everybody's on board, I will start to schedule them. I think for myself, it's not bad to do it at the end, but I think for um, road crews, they're up at two AM sometimes. I'd like to schedule it. First. Right before my report, so it would be all regular business. And then schedule it and then do my report and regular business after that. You guys are okay with that.
But it depends too, and it can it wait until after a budget hearing?
We probably can, yeah. Just know her, and nobody's saying anything except me.
Yeah, I would, I would, Chris, we're gonna start getting into the heavy hitters in the budget, the little easy ones. We get into highway and sledboard and.
So schedule in the January.
Is it, could we do executive sessions? Could we start meetings early? I mean, when we do get into that.
Yeah, we can, we can, we can start meetings early.
I would think each review would take about half an hour, I mean.
Yeah, we can set it at three. So start at um five thirty.
Yeah, just thinking aloud. I mean, that's a great idea to try and respect the fact that they're in the trucks at three.
You just have to warn the agenda that it's, um, you know, that we're starting at five thirty, but that an executive session, that's all.
Speaking of highway, um, Dylan, uh, has a a uh. Culvert that he has um pulled, it's used, but it's in good shape that he pulled from another side that he could put up at the spring. I mean, he's gonna put up at the spring, um, in this next spring. There's no way he's gonna be able to do that work now. But he'll make that area, and it won't cost, because you would wanted to know what it would cost us, so it's just gonna cost us time and the culvert that we already have, basically. Um. They've been preparing the tandems for snow plowing. They just got back, I think Monday or Tuesday, the truck that Jim will be driving, which is, um. Joey's old truck, one of the trucks, so they have all three tandems back now, one is in the garage. Um, and I saw that it was equished. They were equipping with the. Snowplow. Um, the grading is continuing, um. Joey's just trying to get out there and get everything graded. They did start the work on Keeler Pond, but they were not able to finish it. They're gonna finish it in the spring. Um, so they took. They um redid Keeler Pond, but they didn't fill it in with the three inches that they really wanted to do, and they got for per FEMA. They got money to do three inches of. Of um gravel. I asked Dylan if he has time to try to finish that this year. This um fall. Otherwise, take photos so that we know that it was started, so it can report to FEMA. Um. The one ton, it's it's back in the garage for a similar issue. They think that the, that it's a loose wire now. So we took it to Tims Diesel. He thinks it's a loose wire. He was gonna start to look, look at it this week. Just, but it's gonna take some time to find it. So we have roughly thirty-six hundred into it so far this autumn. Um, and once we get it back, uh, Dylan will figure out things to fix the body, what he needs to do. Um, we've added Larry Furno to our insurance as our temporary. Winter employee, and he's working on call. He's not asking for set hours like Reno did. He just wants to be on call. He did ask for, when he's on call on the weekends, he asked to have a guarantee. Uh, three-hour call in. First, for weekends, which is seventy-five bucks, and so it's not, I don't think it's gonna be an issue, because he's on call during the week as well. So. And that comes from the highway budget. Um, and that is paid for with their overtime, so they're not, he, you know, they're they're still saving money. Um, I ordered the installation of guardrails at six ninety-six North Walcott Road. FEMA, I believe, when the FEMA is paying for the full amount for FEMA funds.
Yeah, it's not FEMA, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, the buyout grant.
Okay, the BE and buyout funds, yeah, we're gonna pay for the installation.
Yeah.
That has to happen by the end of December and and um lots of yet to stack.
That was great that they approved that.
I didn't know that was happening. That's awesome.
Uh, Wolcott Arts Collaborative, we did our first event on Saturday. It was hugely successful. We had seventy-seven people attend. Plus the eleven volunteers. Um, people came from Wolcott, Johnson, Eden, Hardwick, Elmore, and Cropsbury. Those are the ones I know about. As well as. And more, and more so, okay. Um, the band had agreed to pay for the door collection. Um, normally they charge a thousand dollars, but the door raised eight hundred twenty. They were absolutely happy with that. Um, we'll never be able to raise more than a thousand, because we recommend, you know, ten dollars a head and can't get more than a hundred people there. But so, moving forward. We're hoping that that we can get the bands to agree to play for the door collection. We're not making money that way, but we're not losing money either, so. Um. What came up, though, out of that was some possible improvements to the town hall for future events. Not only the bands, but we're getting two electric, two estimates for an electrician to run. A new conduit from the existing panel in the kitchen, under the kitchen floor, up and through the basement, up. To the stage outlets and through the stage floor, because. The two outlets that are currently wired to the same breaker. To be on separate breakers. Oh, we want them wired to be on separate breakers, so that the musicians are less likely to blow a breaker during. Performance, because if they do now, they're they're out of luck, basically can't play. Um, there's an empty breaker available on the existing panel in the kitchen. There's also a thirty amp. Outlet and fixture on the. Stage background. It needs to be looked at since it's not running at full ampage. It could either be fixed or disconnected. So we're getting an estimate. Um, and this was Jim's suggestion. I think it's probably a good idea, but still how we're gonna pay for it, but we'll visit that once we get the estimates. And the electricians. And finally, I'm I'm just letting you know that I'm taking five days off in December, the end of December, I pushed this week, so I'll take two days. The twenty-third and twenty-fourth, and then the twenty-nine thirty, thirty-first to be with Mike.
Have a date on the installation?
Installation?
Yeah, when that's coming.
I have not heard from it yet.
Okay.
But I'm kind, oh, it was gonna be the week of December.
Okay.
But I'm hoping that we. He said that week he would start it, the uh, the second week of December, but we still have to get all the wiring done. Solar looks good too, and we finally got today the permit that we needed. From Harvard Electric. They need to do the permit for the selling back the 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 energy and everything, so. I think he'll probably get started fairly quickly, because everything else is in place. Um, Tori, she did want us to check. The idea of putting those up. She's trying to get from flood requirements on how high. Um. They should be elevated. She would like to see if we can elevate them on on cinder, cinder blocks or something. And I have a, an email out to Jeffrey to ask about that.
What on, what on cinder blocks?
The solar batteries, the batteries. Because they'll be inside.
So you anticipate that um, we will be able to charge the batteries and sell some to Hardwick?
Um, it depends. So the batteries will run, would get me up the amp, I think, of the batteries, since we.
I think we went bigger.
Bigger. And I think that will get us two to three days, but then, um, yeah, we'll still be. Selling back and. Can't remember enough, so I don't know how much we'll be saving. I do know from the installation, if all goes well, we. We may have enough to put in a a heat pump here, which will cool it down. We won't need it in the winter, but I think in the summer it will give us then sort of an air conditioning. If we decide to go that far.
And I I read the permit email from Tori. I think that. They approved us to sell up to nine point one kilowatt hours. Does that sound right? Or maybe we were generating it up.
I don't know what that means, though.
Uh.
As far as money.
Yeah, I think, I think it's eighteen cents. It's not very much, yeah. Depends, because the New York is twenty-two. Local, um, here from Potter'sville is like eight, yeah, and then the regular grid's like eighteen, yeah. It's not very much.
It stores as credit, though.
Yeah.
You can carry it over with.
Money in the right direction.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. And I wanted to, um. Just kind of give you an update on what the uh. Wolcott Trust has been doing, and and I had some asks, so I thought Michael could take over as chair. Seeing as I'm chair at the Wolcott Trust. Anyway, our update is that uh, the trust, um. Filed and became a nonprofit corporation in June of twenty-five. Um. Like I told you before, we have board members, um, myself, Bruce Wheeler. Mary Grenea, who is the former principal over here, and up there at school. Liz in Mooresville. And uh, Belinda is our treasurer. And then we have a members. We have adopted bylaws and conflict of interest policies. Uh, we've filed, uh, worked with, um. An attorney who helped us file our tax exemption with the IRS. For nonprofit status. In the meantime. Uh, the Preservation Trust of Vermont has agreed to be our fiscal sponsor for three years. Preservation Trust of Vermont. So far, we have, um. Well, we received our initial. Two hundred twenty-five thousand dollar grant for, from Preservation Trust for. The building renovation, seventy-five thousand additional from them for uh, technical support. Uh, a hundred thousand from Vermont Housing Conservation Board grant for ADA, um. Improvements. Uh, we've just applied for the, a fifty-six thousand dollar window restoration. Uh, the trust will have to put up thirty-six thousand of that. So we've spent some money so far. We've also recently hired, um, with the Preservation Trust, um. Put up to bid architects for all these projects, and so. Uh. The. Oh, I forgot what their name is. Um, Vermont Integrated Architects will be working on our project. They met with the whole group a couple of weeks ago, and then Tor. Found out what, you know, what we would like to see happen, so things are are moving along. One part of that was that, um, we had applied with the Moyn County Planning Commission. For. Uh, brownfields, which is required because the SPUD will grab money to do brownfields and also do. Um, lead and asbestos testing, which was approved, but come to find out. Uh, because the town is applying and the town. Owns the parcel, this is. We could not apply for umbrella. So they're denying it. The only way that they. Would approve these grant funds if there was a ninety-nine year lease to the trust. So I I don't know what the board's thoughts are on that. I know that I've been quite nervous lately. And I feel like the board needs to have a discussion with the trust about the lease before we go too much further. What your expectations are and ours. I mean, there's a lot of things to think about, you know, we're. Renovating the building. With our monies, you know, and fundraising and so forth, and getting it back up to shape. Um. But then you're gonna move town, the town library into there. You know. I can't imagine you wanna pay rent, but does that mean? Do you, uh, would you take over the maintenance of part of it? I I think there's a lot to think about.
There's moving parts there.
Yeah, yeah, um, we're not gonna decide tonight, but I would like to seriously start thinking about that. And same as the depot. Building, how. How you see that working, and also I brought this tonight, um. You know, it's the map of where the wastewater is gonna go, and there's gonna be a two thousand gallon tank. Which will serve. Both the. Both the town office and the schoolhouse, so the user fees. How you break that out.
Should be easy with the the units. Right, we should be able to get design flows and just build for that. Based on whatever tables they're gonna use.
Uh, you know. I don't know how you wanna start approaching it. Originally, we had asked for a fifty-year lease. That's the only way we could apply for this grant. I'm not sure what your feeling is, about. Ninety-nine year lease. Uh, that lease component needs to. Happen soon, I think, before we get too, too far.
So. Um. Catch me up to speed here, the the trust's intention, ultimate intention. Is to occupy the depot building where the library is currently. And the library would then take. The old town hall.
So we would. Initially, this is the main project to restore the schoolhouse, and um, it's being designed, um. For the library to be in there. It's being designed, um, for the library to be in there and community space right now. You know, they're taking the architects, taking into account all their shelving and books and everything. So once that's ready, they would move over, this would be empty, um. I talked to them about, um, the architects that, you know, something seriously needs to be done with that deck. And with the snow that comes off, looking, you know, that needs to be redesigned. Something's safe, and how are you gonna enter and exit the building, um. So we, the trust, trust uh, is into restoring buildings. Not running businesses, so we would hope that we could lease out. The depot building to someone to run some kind of cafe, but also. Uh, there's different ideas on the committee of having it available to the public. If like the library wanted to have cooking classes in there, I mean, there's some, you know. There's still a lot of discussion in there, but also make sure that this uh, gathering space, you know, like. A bee's knees used to be, um, that people could go in there and have music too, and.
Are you referring to the library now?
Well, to the depot.
Depot space?
Yeah.
So, the mechanics of that, this building needs to be restored, the funding.
Number one, yeah.
The funding for that comes from the town leasing. The, I'm sorry, what do you call it, I forgot.
No, the funding doesn't come from the town at all.
No, 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 uh, in order for you guys to secure the funding, we need to sign that ninety-nine year lease.
Well, just for that one, for thirteen thousand dollars, for the umbrella.
Okay.
I mean, if not, we eat it, it'll come out of our seventy-five thousand dollars. But if that's not a problem, we might consider moving forward, um, with a ninety-nine year lease.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think of the logistics of how that, that works. And stop me where I'm wrong, so town, town currently owns the two buildings.
Mm-hmm.
Um, town needs to lease schoolhouse. To.
The trust?
The trust, and then the trust is going to rent that space, lease that space, whatever they're gonna do, back to the library. When we then lease the depot to you, so the trust would theoretically, if I'm doing this right in my head. Own, or have leases on two buildings.
We would have leases on two buildings.
You would lease, then sublease the depot to an operator with the understandings that meet whatever the trust wants to do. Um, and then the trust itself, but the library would be in the schoolhouse.
It would.
And you guys would be subleasing dealing with that, does that complicate?
So I don't really think that, yeah, uh, does it complicate?
Does it, so would it complicate any library funding if they were? Cause I'm just thinking about the paper trail of how that would have to work.
I don't think so, actually, the, the trust is really pushing, pushing the library. The state library has a grant for five hundred thousand dollars to move them over there and renovate that space. Um, because they have no room for programming over here, um. So I don't think so, um, what I, I don't like is, um. As a select board member, I don't like the idea of. The town having to lease the library space.
Right.
When they already had it, had a space, so if we're not getting any money for maintenance. We have to come up with a different scenario of how, uh, the maintenance on that building. You know, would be carried, I mean, you're paying for the insurance for them to be over there, you know. Maybe you need to be paying for a lot of those things that we would not have to do, cause. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I think I, I think I see what you're saying, it, it, to me, it sounds way more simple if the library were to be awarded. Then we, then the town would only lease the trust to the depot, once the library is over there, but all these things have got to move at the same time.
Well, that you have to lease, you have to lease that building to us, or all this other stuff. Cause you already agreed to with a grant.
Right.
You agreed to lease it to us.
Right.
But that's as far as we've gotten, um. We still could lease it from you for a dollar a year, but, um. You know, but we wouldn't be responsible for any maintenance on it, you know what I mean?
Could there be, would it interrupt the trust's funding if there were a clause in there to break the lease? If we could somehow break that contract when the time came to swap buildings?
Well, um, you, you agreed to fifty years, I have it in minutes.
Yeah.
That's it.
For the lease that.
It had to be fifty years, um, to apply for that.
Right.
An initial grant.
We, did we get into any other terms, I don't recall setting any other.
If the library is willing to go over there, could maybe the library help pay for the maintenance on it, it's part of the lease.
Parts of it.
It's probably down to the town has to pay for the maintenance, period. If it goes to the library, it makes sense.
Or maybe just the town pays for the insurance of the building or something, I mean, I, think about it. You don't have to tell me tonight, but I wanna start working on what's fair. To all involved, you know, the taxpayers.
I just wanted to make sure I understood the mechanics, and, and result is still, library belongs in schoolhouse. Uh, depot is subleased to an operator, both buildings would be leased from the town. To the trust, and then the trust and the town would have to engage in some kind of maintenance upkeep agreement.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Like this one over here isn't a problem, I don't think. I think moving a town entity into that one is. Um, a little, a little more complicated. Because I don't, taxpayers shouldn't. Have to pay to rent a space when they had one.
Yeah.
How much is the library, the library paying the maintenance over there now, is the call the town budget?
Comes out of the town budget, they pay for their phones, we pay for their heat, um. And everything else.
One more question as a board member to the, to the trust, I suppose, um. Would you guys be willing to entertain, I mean, thinking about leasing and then subleasing? If we leased to the trust for fifty years, a dollar a year. Would the trust then be willing to entertain the sublease back to the library for the same dollar amount? And then that way there, nothing really changes for us, there's some paperwork filed, but it truly doesn't change the way we operate.
I'll ask that, I, I don't see why not.
That way there, the taxpayers aren't taking on an additional burden. Nothing as far as how our budgets operate, unless I'm missing something, changes. Taxpayers don't take on an additional burden, and it still allows all of the, but.
So.
Insurance would be bigger.
Cause now it's a bigger building, you had more area, bigger book volume.
Well, then hopefully we get a little higher library engagement too, I mean, not that that puts money in the door, but.
Right.
Yes, there would be expenses, there would be expenses.
So, um, ultimately, what the trust do is, is, um. Not to run any businesses or anything, it's to provide, uh, to restore buildings. For economic and social well-being of the town, so. We would want to, um. Have some money to, you know, when these were done, and hopefully new members were on to. You know, find another project that might be the woke at store, I don't know, you know.
Yeah, and, and from any building that the trust does restore. And then offers an operating agreement too, that would come with, with some kind of fee. Um. But, like you said, as a select board member, it really shouldn't, that shouldn't be passed for the library, I wouldn't think.
No, I think it's a little different.
Yeah.
And that other space will be on, so one side will be the library, and I think in the hallway would be, um. Historicals, society, you know, work displays and stuff, on the other side. More of a gathering space, um, for the town.
Yeah. Well, all towns, all towns need more third spaces, so I think that's what they're called.
And then if, you know, the library has their books over there, and it's quiet, but they could go over and do their programming or. You know, over in that other space, um.
Yeah.
Have workshops and so forth, and then Web could come in, you could go in there and do workshops.
The library does like have, uh, they just have a three D printer now, and they can set up the, their, the programming here.
That's what they wanna do, yeah.
Yeah, as long as we can work the mechanics out, I like the idea.
Right. What do you think about the ninety-nine?
I, one-fifth of an opinion, I also am not at all worried about a ninety-nine year lease, I. It's. My vision would be that this would run into perpetuity anyway, at the end of a fifty-year lease, I would hope that whoever's sitting in. This room at, at these tables, hopefully not these tables. Uh, you know, would, would be willing to re-sign the lease, so whether it's fifty or it's a hundred, it, it doesn't matter to me.
I feel safer with the fifty than let some other generation. Down the road, make the decisions.
Yeah.
Go with the minimal, let people decide.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll see what I can do about, um, working on the lease. And the whole idea of leasing it, and, and you know, was that, you know, if for some reason the trust falls apart. It reverts back to the town, you don't wanna get rid of it. We'll have to restore something, hopefully.
Yeah. Well, almost two.
Mm-hmm.
By the time we're all settled down, and before it dissolved, they should do the town hall too. I hear they need some lighting upgrades.
Yeah, the electricity is probably the only bad part of that, uh, but pretty much everything. I'm not sure they're gonna have to have some window restoration, restoration at some point soon, but. You know, it's got a good roof, the basement's clean, it's insulated in the basement, it has nice water filter. Yeah.
It looked really nice, cause they, uh, turned off the lights and just put up little fairy lights, and I mean, it was just a lovely atmosphere.
Okay, let's move on to winter parking ban, um, so we, oh. Michelle and I were talking about putting our policy in the paper like other towns, and. She noticed that there wasn't really any date on there, or when this winter parking ban policy should be in effect, um.
Do we wanna add a date to our policy, or do we wanna just kind of implement a time, like? November first to May first, like Cambridge uses that, those dates.
And if you're familiar with it, it basically says that, um, you can't park on the roads, um. In the winter, you can't plow snow in the roads in the winter, you have to move your fences back. Part on town right away, uh, you can, you can't take any sand. Um, if you're a commercial user, and no salt. Does it say anything else?
I think that's about it. But I posted in the paper, it's just, when do we post it?
So it, it, you know, it kinda, we felt like it needed, um. When this winter parking ban policy took effect during what months?
Any input from the highway department?
No.
We just looked at other towns, they were both November first and May first.
Yeah.
Absolutely, we just say, like last year, um. I think it was Chan and Dylan just said, hey, we put out the, the winter parking ban, and then Chan asked me to write a letter to Phil Teal.
Mm-hmm.
To ask him to park his truck on the other side, which I've done both, but then it was just like, when do we start doing this? Should that, because I put it on my calendar then for the, for the.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I think, I think it's pretty standard, everybody is November to May.
I don't know if we have to actually formalize it, I just wanna know, you know, we could, I don't know if that's a policy.
So it is a policy, so why don't we just formalize it, um, um, and then you can change the policy. Do we have any, um, concerns about that, that, those dates on the policy, the winter policy?
And I assume it's like most other policies, where it's one of those, when there's a complaint, they're enforced, I mean. If somebody parks there on November third and it's not snowing yet, no one's gonna care.
Well, if they're out plowing and they're in the way, and the rug for wants to have a tow, he can.
Right.
They can.
Yeah, but if they're not out, you know what I mean, if we, if we, if we instituted it from November first.
Yeah.
And it doesn't snow until December, no one's gonna be out there to whine that the cars are in the way, so. We put it out early, and are you technically violating it, sure, but who, I mean, no one's gonna come, complain about it, so.
It's getting snowing, right? Okay, all of us in favor of adding the date November first to May first. On our winter parking ban policy. They are.
Hi.
I.
We have, do we have a first emotion?
Probably didn't motion at all, horrible, we all agree.
We don't need emotions.
I made the motion.
Thank you.
If the minutes need a name, they can use mine.
I have a second.
I'll second.
Uh, thanks. If you vote, did everyone vote in agreement, I missed it, okay, thanks. And finally, we have to finalize or formalize the three votes that we send out via email. And there's a little bit I wanna talk about for each, so. If we start with the damaged, uh, town hall column, someone ran into it, if you don't know who. Uh, I filed a police report, they actually asked, um, Sheriff Makuda. Get us, um, the, the weeds has a camera, perhaps that was a way. And, and it is directed on the town hall, um, and I can't give a request, uh.
I did, and you haven't. I'm very disappointed.
I, I don't think we're gonna get one, to be honest, to, to be real. And they can't release it to me, cause I already asked, and they have to get it through the sheriff, they have to have a request. Through the sheriff, which makes sense, because it's, you know, people are, you know, that makes absolute sense to me, anyway. Um, I sent out an, an email getting, um, approval. Uh, I wanted to know, um, if Michael, because he put the post up. Um, could, could be allowed to bid on the project, so we sent out an email, and, um. We had, uh, Michael recused himself, but we had, um, Richard and Alan and Martin. Um, authorized the ability, gave Michael the authority to bid on the, the, uh, project. And he, as long as he recuses himself, so I wanted to formalize that, and then talk about the bids, and just get approval to accept the bid. I have two bids, so I guess the motion is to, um. Allow Michael parody to bid on the town, on column repair or replacement, if he recuses himself from addressing. On column repair or replacement if he recuses himself from addressing the issue.
Make that motion.
A second.
Those in favor? I have. One is extension.
So the bits we received two, one from site above and one from like parity. Um, huge difference. So site above carpentry. Sent in a bid for seven thousand eight hundred dollars for one column. And that is to build it with cedar. They were actually gonna construct it. Um, the toss of, the cost of two, two columns, should we want them to look alike? Because he said he would have a hard time matching it. Would be fourteen hundred forty, four hundred dollars. Or sorry, fourteen thousand four hundred dollars. Um, the bid from Michael Parity was to actually buy a prefab. Column, which I I took a photograph and it looks like it's gonna match fairly well. But Michael has a bid of roughly, it's nineteen hundred twenty five dollars for both to repair both. Because it is a prefab. This unit will support fourteen thousand pounds each. Each column can support fourteen thousand pounds. Um, it is hollow inside, but the other one's gonna be hollow as well as as our D sixteen.
Can you fit that?
It doesn't need one.
Oh.
The, these prefab columns are made out of reinforced fiberglass, so they won't weather crack and do any of the other things that the wood ones do. And they are structurally rated to hold fourteen thousand pounds. I left the spec sheet up to effect.
Oh, you did see. Okay. Do you guys wanna see these bids? So I obviously am proposing that we go in there and these good because then we can maybe afford to do two. I don't know, I still don't know. We all wanna pay. If you don't know that you have. We may have two thousand of the budgets depending on when that the signs, because we had budgeted six thousand but signs and that's not happening yet. Um. I don't know that we're gonna get signs installed before July first calling them anyway. It just depends on who we get. Going on that, so I don't know.
If we can't do this, I'd say if we aren't getting all the signs done, that makes most sense to me.
Right, we'll just do, we'll just take it out of the sign portion and that will have to be done in the next calendar year. I mean, there's a small portion. It might still be live. In case we don't have any more emergencies, we still have the.
I still need to get snow guards up there, so I'm saving two thousand for the snow guards.
If I get someone to hit our post up there, and we need new electric at the town hall. I mean, it goes on, so we need to fix those posts though.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
So you can start that. Okay. And I'll put that we're gonna. So we're gonna award it then to parity. Do we need to make a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to award it to um.
Parity Construction.
Parity Construction. Nineteen hundred.
A county twenty five.
Uh?
Nineteen twenty five.
Nineteen twenty five for pounds.
No, for both.
Oh, for both. We have a second?
All second.
All those in favor? I. Post.
Extension.
And I hate to hijack, but on the topic of bidding on things with all of the other work that's going out to bid. As long as I stay out of the loop on. Other contractors bidding and the pricing and whatever, is the board comfortable if I were to continue bidding on work? I don't need a motion. I just wanna know for myself whether or not I can look at these RFPs. That are gonna be coming out.
Wow.
Uh, you said something about the handyman stuff and this, I think you're gonna send the signs out as well, right?
Yeah.
I'm, I just want, I understand that it is an obvious, it could appear to be an obvious conflict. I sit on this board. Um. But I just wanna make sure verbally anyway that the board is okay with me looking at other work. For the town. And if they're not, I'll stay away from it. I just.
I find it really hard to get people to even bid or do anything for us. Um.
For a reasonable price.
Yeah, um. I don't have a problem as long as there's, you know, not lots of people bidding.
Oh, if there's, and I, and we ran into this in the days before Michelle, we ran into, uh, with the the highway department. There was another bid that was really, really close to mine. And I couldn't see any reason why we shouldn't. I think they were a thousand dollars less than me. And I mean, I'll be the first person to tell you, you should go with the most reasonable bid. Um, I just, I don't wanna waste my time or the board's time preparing any of the the bids. Um, if you guys are uncomfortable with that, because, you know, obviously I'm involved in town business. Uh. So I will, I will stay. The the business will stay away from that if the board is uncomfortable. But if you guys are comfortable with me throwing my hat in the ring, then I will continue to do that. I guess the the short version of that question is, does my position on the select word disqualify me from looking at the work that the town puts out?
Would. Would it be proper for me to interject something here? Um, in hearing and earlier would have said something, but you know, like with the maintenance position or handyman position. I've always been one to believe in stuff like that, that it was. More beneficial to try to get the work to somebody who lives in town and who pays taxes in town. Just a thought.
Well, Michael does live in town and does pay taxes. The little predicament we are in is whether it's a conflict of interest. With him sitting on the board. Um, how that, that perception to tech, you know, people out there. What that perception is. The other problem is we have a really hard time. Even getting anyone to wanna do anything anymore. Um, for a reasonable price and show up.
That's kind of what I'm saying. Now, if if. The guy is paying taxes and. Paying for the services that help paying for the services that we're all getting. Um, he should be given some kind of a chance at it at least. Just, just my train of thought.
Thank you.
Is there any way that the process? Ensures that Mike isn't working at other bids?
Oh, I would not, yeah.
I had no idea that you had an informal bit or informal email to allow me to bid on the town hall repair. I. I had made a stink about making sure that the conflict was disclosed and I didn't want to. Proclude anybody else from bidding on it, but I had no idea that you had sent that that out. I mean. I have no interest in unfair competition.
Yep.
And, you know, Michelle has done a fantastic job of making sure that I'm in this.
I just think as long as you can answer that question if it comes up. You know, that just might be something to keep in mind.
Okay, um. I, I think then I am going to proceed. When the RFPs come out, if it fits my skill set and whatever, I think I'll present a bid and then same way we did tonight, I'll obviously. Take my select word and face the corner. And you guys can do with that what you want.
Can you still answer questions? If I have questions about a general project, because I usually kinda go to Michael if it's like a building. Question. I just wanna know if I'm gonna have to still answer that and go to you to answer a question.
Uh, my opinion, yeah. Uh, my opinion would be, yeah, you, I I would hope that you would still be able to lean on me for that as long as the question that you asked. Um. Is equal against anybody else who has responded. Or if, say you ask me a question about what should we do with that window and I give you an answer, that. RFP reflects what we're looking for. Um, if that makes any sense.
So when I did that with um, when I did the the biops and and the demolition, so we would meet and. Look at the project and people would ask questions. And sometimes I would have to find information, so I would send it out to everyone. What the question was, what I found out, you know, if it was pertinent.
If this is before it even goes out to bid.
Yeah, yeah, while they're thinking about their bid.
Well, if I don't have a list, I don't even, I've never even.
Oh, oh, that's true.
Like for the column, I always say, I don't know what to do. It looks like it's really cracking. We need to support it. And so Michael said he can go put it up and then I started asking questions about it because I'm just, I don't know a lot about. You know, building and um. What I was very particular about doing is making sure that the three people I asked to bid on this this column. Had the exact same email. They they all received the exact same request. And it put it out to bid, but I contacted because of the pricing, I figured. Um, I could, it was under ten thousand that I could just get away with two to three. For our purchasing policy, I can get away with two to three requests.
So I really think it's bad to to ask people to bid. I I don't think that's fair because then you didn't ask someone else to bid or someone. You you've got to put it in the paper or in the newspaper or something.
Our purchasing policy says you can just get from two local stores, the two, you know, reputable. I mean, we would have to change the purchasing policy. And the time that it takes to do that.
But it's really unfair, I think, that, you know.
But this is for under ten thousand projects. I mean, we we could change the purchasing policy, but right now it allows Dylan and it allows us to put out. You don't go to RFP unless it's ten, over ten thousand.
So what if we met in the middle somewhere and put, I mean, because posting in the papers is expensive, but the reports forum is free. Um, the website, we could have. Uh, a section on.
Front porch forms would get a better or.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Because I don't know how many people um read it.
Yeah.
The website. Um.
But a lot of towns have a little section, you know, job opportunities and and um, RFPs, RFQs.
Yeah, we don't have one.
Uh, we don't send a whole lot out to bid anymore. We did that one year, but. But but you're right, everybody, everybody should have an opportunity to know that the work is going out.
I mean, there's a ton of contractors in town out there.
There's huge, they're coming, I mean, woodwork.
So then I think that if we just ask one or two and then give it to Michael and run the board. We're creating quite a, I feel uncomfortable that we haven't. Something.
Is there any other social media the town has, you were saying earlier about?
This is not for tour.
If it's on a Facebook page, if you put out a quote or something, our RFP, that'd be a good spot to let people know.
We talked about starting a Facebook page tonight, but we don't have one right now.
You guys thought about maybe every six months or so, we'll put a little posting out saying, hey, if you are a contractor. And wanna be on our list of people we. Send to when we have a short term or short turnaround project. Um. Sign up.
Just do an at the ready list essentially. And that the ready implies so that they're giving us rates and everything.
Or do you wanna be on a.
To be honest.
Emergency project list.
Well, pre- pre-qualified contractors, because that way there, the town would have pre-qualified service providers. Because then the town would already have their insurance information on file. They would already have a W nine. Um. I don't hate that idea.
So that's for the maintenance person that we're looking for as well, just get a pre-qualified.
Well, and and that that may. That list could serve as. The maintenance person, right? So rather than looking necessarily to fill the maintenance position. We wanna fill a pre-qualified service provider list.
Because someone could be busy on something and they can't get to it in time to visit.
Right. Yeah, and if you've got, I mean, limited to your point, I can think of a dozen contractors.
That and electricians. We do have a couple of electricians that we call because there aren't that many. This initially started as it had to be historical at first. And so I called the only historical people I could find. And I didn't hear back from any of them. And then Belinda's like, well, give, give um. Uh, site above a call because we just needed to call two people essentially based on the personnel with the purchasing policy. But if we want to change that, I'm more than happy to. To put it out of our um, our front porch forum and give, you know, everybody two weeks to to get back to me. But to find the newspaper gets.
Oh, newspapers, no, but just somehow put something out and and I like this idea too, you know.
Yeah.
Um.
On that way there, you you've got a list of people who are interested in engaging in business with the town.
And then I called just the people who were qualified to do this kind of project. Or just give it out to the full email list and say, hey, are you interested?
Yeah, I mean, we could, we could complicate it if you wanted to and have them fill out whatever. We could create a form. Wow, we're reinventing the wheel here, but we could create a form that says, you know, this is the category of service that we provide and then. When you or when the board determines this is the category of service that we're looking for, you email those people on that email list. I think you're gonna get.
Very specific though, and you might miss somebody, so I would just say. Um, I got an email list, which is what we did for writing the town stuff.
Yeah.
And and I just send it out. And that's kind of. What we did for the other, but that was a much more complicated.
And Colchester has, uh, and I only know this because I'm on their email list. Colchester has that. Whenever Colchester puts out, and a lot of other towns. Put out anything to bid, anybody that's on that email list gets the bid. I am frequently receiving bids for somebody who wants to provide a twenty twenty five police cruiser. That's not really my wheelhouse, but I'm on the email list.
Sure.
Uh, I just delete it.
That's what I think then, we we can do that and create a pre. And then also put it out. Um, and I I can do that in the newspaper or just go through a front porch forum for that.
Well, how did we do it for the other people that?
That was a full-on RFP for the, but that was specifically for a three day. I mean, we made a full-on policy for that one. That's just for the three days following post flooding and all of that. That was very formal. Um, but I think if, as we were saying, we want someone local so that like you guys can take place.
Well, I'd like the local to be the county kind of.
Front porch forum would be, well, that is right.
And I I do believe, um. We probably should put the amount threshold. Uh, yeah, uh, expected amount threshold on it, whatever our purchasing policy says, because I do remember somewhere in the policy. I don't remember what the number is. There is a number where it has to go through formal RFP. Is that what it is?
Yeah.
And that formal RFP process has, um.
Yeah, the the bidding is.
And it has language in it where we can't give preference to bidders just because they're locals.
Yeah.
We have to give them preference on other, other merits. But. Yeah, so anyway, when you're building your pre-qualified list, it might be nice to set the expectation that. This is for projects ten thousand and below. Because formal RFPs take place after that. I really am sorry to have burned up twenty minutes of that. That could have been an email.
Fine, sounds good. I can get started on this thing tomorrow. And then finally, the. And then finally the, uh, we had, so we awarded that we did that one. Um, then I sent out one for the better, to submit the better back, the Better Roads grant, because it was an October thirty first deadline. We had illness, everybody was out, so we missed the actual submission at the last. I didn't have the grant prepared at the last board meeting because there was that three week delay, so two weeks, anyway, so I emailed out to the select board on ten twenty five approval to submit the Better Roads grant. Um, it has slightly changed because once I submitted it, he came back and said, look, we can't fund blah, 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 and and so there were some slight adjustments, not a lot. But Martin, Parity and Lee approved the, the idea of submitting the grant. I did then change the amount to twenty eight thousand, one hundred seventy two dollars and forty two cents. Eight thousand, one hundred seventy two dollars and forty two cents is the town share. And the grant was for twenty thousand dollars from the state. It's to do work on Elmer Pond and Corshane Farm Roads, we would be hitting, I think, five segments of the MRP, MRGP segments. Um, it's to replace an upsized two culverts. Uh, stone line inlets and outlets, needs a stamp. Uh, so I'm one of the ditches going up Corshane Farm and Road because it's on slope. And then resurface approximately thirty eight hundred feet of the road along those segments by adding three inches deep of three quarter inch gravel. And this, we think would bring Elmer Pond Road fully right now to fully needs, um, the plant conform, MRG performance based on the current map. Um, and the materials the materials are gonna cost roughly seventeen thousand, two hundred dollars, so the grant would pay for the materials, at least the twenty thousand dollar grant would pay for the materials. So out-of-pocket expenses we've covered. So I think I just need a formal vote to submit the Better Road Grant in the amount of twenty eight thousand, one hundred seventy two dollars and forty two cents.
I'll take your motion. Also, I can.
For the discussion. All those in favor, I'll have it.
And finally, the petty cash group, uh, uh, I sent around, um, approval for the Wolkett Arts Collaborative Petty Cash, to establish a petty cash bank, um, using a hundred dollars from the four thousand that we received from the library. And just to maintain that bank so that we have event funding and, um, I received a parody, Martin and Lee. Alan, you respond, I'm so sorry, you responded to the Better Roads grant, right?
Both of them, yeah.
But you did respond to the petty cash, I don't think.
Um, yes, you did. Yeah, you had a question about accounting.
So yeah, if I could just get a motion to allow Wolkett Arts Collaborative to establish and maintain that one hundred dollar petty cash bank.
All second.
All those in favor? I proposed. The carry.
So Michael?
We were quick, Kurt and I attended the sheriff's communication budget hearing. Um, it was interesting, but he, he was up at eight, was it eight point seven five percent increase, something up, up there. Anyway, he basically told him he had to go back down five three, three and a half percent, so he's, he's working on that, um. It was a good discussion, I just did receive the sheriff's budget, it's a three point five percent increase. He wants to know, this should be, if we are happy with that or he should have some hearings, so that's what I was asking about.
I'm sorry, so you can't see that the, um, we just told the sheriff we needed to drop back down to three percent, three, three and a half, that wasn't just me, it was just Kurt and.
Hyde Park. That's all I was saying.
Cambridge.
Well, they weren't there.
Uh, Moorestow was there.
Yeah. Pretty much Eden wanted his Elmer Pond and Hyde Park would let them spend whatever they wanted. And we said three and a half.
Well, Stowe was there and they weren't too happy because.
Mike Stowe was there too.
They wanted them to reimburse them for fifty thousand dollars to put a repeater of. The problem was they didn't confirm with sheriff's department, um, frequency was to be used. So to keep everything, so they could talk to everybody, no matter what it was, EMS, fire, police. You had to put a new repeater on. And Stowe wasn't very happy about putting out fifty thousand since.
Well, they refused.
They refused to, but they had put out two hundred and eighty thousand.
Right.
To do their upgrades. And I remember at the big select board thing that we went to at, uh, Willie Union, not the most recent one, but the one before, Stowe had some comments on the sheriff's.
Yeah, that was Paco and that's the one that was there.
He was safety. He was the nearest that could stay for the safety.
Right.
Sounded, sounds like it was much of the same. He was right, dude would say, we're gonna be our own debt and cheat. And they said, well, you got all this money invested prior, what are you gonna do? Let it go? Yeah. Which they should have, they should have said, okay, you're your own problem and don't call us for help. That's what it basically came down to. And so to make sure that, again, I clarity is my, my biggest thing. So they presented a budget that was eighty three quarter. And you were able to.
Tell them to go with that.
Okay. Go back to the almost previous. And then they were able to put that three and a half represented.
Have we seen one? I don't know if we've seen it.
Last year was three and a half.
Yeah, but we haven't seen.
This one, I don't know if it's gonna get it to the three and a half.
Haven't seen it, I just told, he wanted to know where, where he had to work out. And, um, but he did send me the sheriff's budget. And that's at three and a half, his, their question is whether we wanted, um, if we were okay with that or we wanted, um, to have a, you know, meeting.
I mean, three and a half percent, they're, they're not gaining. No, it's a pile of money, but that's just covering costs, right? Well, not even covering.
The sheriff's department's gonna, um, attribute, um, a hundred ninety two thousand.
So the eight point two five percent, uh.
Was a draft, just a draft.
Yeah, but we're talking about two different budgets.
Communication.
Communication, okay.
And just again, clarity for me, we have moved uh, uh, well, I don't know that we've made the decision, but there was a motion on town meeting for non-binding business or whatever, where someone suggested, was Bill Cotton suggested that we keep the emergency services and the shows in the select board budget. Communications.
It goes back and forth every year.
Okay.
Yeah, and then we'll have the people screaming and they want it separate because they wanna vote it down and then Bill will be mad. So it's, it's, it's time to put it back again.
Okay. All right, so, and so in the communications budget never left, the communication budget stayed in our. Okay, and we'll use the sheriffs. And Bill wants the sheriffs back in there because he thinks we're getting something big out of it. Right.
Well, no, it's never voted down.
Yeah.
They had an opportunity during COVID, that was the ideal time when everyone got mailed the ballot. That didn't. It was up there. I think what our duty is, is to look at their budgets and know what's in there and make sure they're kept.
Yeah.
But, you know, their health insurance goes up too and.
Is, um, does the sheriff's department when they drop these budgets play around with the services provided? And start changing that up if we're to meet the three point five as opposed to higher than that?
Well, it's not, they don't do three point five for a certain town.
That's really.
It's the whole.
It's the whole service.
Yeah.
And so, but they, when they do that, they say, we're dedicating this much manpower to this town.
Yeah, we have a percentage, I'm not sure, but I can't remember what our percentage is.
Basically, however they break it down, they're gonna, it's gonna stay the same and they have to figure out how to get it to the number you're looking for. Kind of compromise between Eden, Hyde Park and Wolkett.
Cambridge.
Yeah, but I guess Cambridge was there to ask.
Yeah, so Wolkett, Johnson and Hyde Park get an assessment, um.
Then Eden.
Eden, Elmer sure gets a little bit of, um, gives a little bit of money for just the traffic patrol and Laraway give, well, Laraway's not giving any issue.
You know, I'm surprised Eden, I was told by Eden that we don't have sheriff's patrol.
They don't because they don't pay.
Okay, so you just said that Eden wanted to keep.
No, I didn't say that.
Eden, if they want something, have to kick in, same with Cambridge.
But they were there.
They were there.
They were there.
But because they were there for the communication.
Oh, they gave the community, okay, thank you.
And I did learn too that the, um, Eden School, even though Eden doesn't have sheriff's coverage, the school does. They, they have to pay for it.
Yeah, they, they have a school resource officer.
I don't know if they have enough SRO, but I do know that they're covered, or at least partial. Yeah, I, I do know that they get coverage from the sheriff's department.
Well, Roger will back up anybody if this is something that if ain't going on, if someone can't go, they go.
Yeah.
He will never say no.
But yes, everybody in Lemoyal County pays in for all their communications, the tower service, the.
Their dairy.
Dairy pays in, but there is separate entity.
In Hardwick and Greensboro.
And Morrisville has their own service.
No, not communications.
Okay.
Yeah. At least it's separate, in Morrisville.
And do we call that just the sheriff patrol? That's kind of the patrol that it creates.
It's been what, twenty five, he said, twenty five, thirty years, we've been doing this communications for Lemoyal? Yeah.
My God.
I just know about it because being on the fire department, we had to put a repeater. It's too bad they couldn't put another tower somewhere. Put another, uh, dish on. People are fighting it.
Okay, that's all I have and we don't have, um, nurture here.
Pictures to film. Always gonna step up.
Right.
So we're all gonna die here.
Pretty interesting, that one.
Yeah, I usually just go with it. What you do, you don't. All second. Time of the road crew starting at?
They start now on winter schedule, so they're at, um, they work from eight until four, but they usually start at two AM, it's not.
Speed clock will be there.
They'll be there at eight to four, yeah, um, they've been there, I don't know, they've been answering my texts at six, I guess.